This will be on car sharing. Are there any, is there any public comment? Maurice? Oh, Peter. Don't fight.
Mayor Davis, before we start, can I ask? I decided that since we have a new city manager, that I would take some photographs. Now, the last meeting was the first meeting, but I wasn't prepared. And so, I'm wondering if anyone has objection. I won't take any flash photography, but I'm going to set it up. Is that okay?
No problem.
Who are you going to take pictures of?
Well, I'm just going to put it right, put my camera right here, my digital camera, and move it around. It'll be on a tripod, so I hope you're all presentable.
Yeah, as long as, well, I think it's fine for us. I just hope that people, members of the public, don't feel intimidated by that. That's the only thing I'd be concerned.
I'm mostly going to-
Is it just for the car share item or all night?
No, no, I don't know how long it's going to be. I mean, I'm taking pictures of us, of the staff, mostly Pat O'Keefe. Why?
Yeah.
Because he's starting a new job, that's why.
Well, let's consider that and bring it back to the next meeting. How's that? So that the council members have a chance to think about whether they want to be media stars or not. Okay, Peter, let's move.
Hi. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. We're here tonight to discuss car sharing, and we have two guests, Bryce Nesbit and Wendy Silvani, and I'm just here to introduce them. Basically, Bryce, come on up. Bryce Nesbit is, among other things, a member of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee in the city, and he also happens to work for Emery Go Round as a consultant and also for City Car Share. And he's going to give us kind of an overview of car sharing in general. And then Wendy will discuss what is still a draft proposal that the TMA might be working on with car sharing. And I also wanted to make one correction before we get started.
Gentlemen, could we give some attention to Mr.-
Sorry, Peter. Sorry.
Thank you.
One correction in the staff report, under the recommendations in the staff report, if you turn to that page, there's a, there are three recommendations. In the second one, we'll discuss them after Bryce and Wendy go forward, but there is a, there are grant funds that may be available from the TFCA, and here it says TMA. So that's a, that's a big difference between, the TMA is not offering any grant funds to the city. It would be the TFCA, which is the Transportation Fund for Clean Air, from the CMA, the Congestion Management Agency. So that's just one thing I wanted to clear up in the beginning. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Peter?
Sure.
My understanding was that redevelopment agency money might go into this car share.
Let's, let's talk about that maybe at the end, after Bryce, Wendy also needs to go.
Here's my question. I understand that we're going to select perhaps one car share vendor.
That's, yeah, that's a possibility.
And Bryce, are your, is your company going to respond to that RFP?
City Car Share has already responded.
You need to speak into the microphone.
City Car Share has already responded to an RFP to the TMA.
Okay. Mayor Davis, I'm a little bit uncomfortable hearing from one prospective vendor, but...
What is the pleasure of the council? I have no problem with this. I think we know Bryce. He's worked very hard for us on the bicycle committee, and does anyone else have an objection to this?
No, I don't have a problem, and I did invite Denise Pinkston, and I don't know why she's not here, so.
She said she couldn't make it.
No competing, and people, I mean-
Right, Bryce is not going to really be talking about his, the company he works for. He's talking about in general how car sharing works.
Okay.
Well, this was my take on the matter, that because I've had the pleasure of listening to Bryce at the bicycle committee meetings, and he's looking at the overall picture and how it fits in, in relative terms to the car share. Let's move ahead.
Okay.
Okay, and one additional piece of background, I founded a, co-founded a company in Emeryville. It was Next Bus Information Systems, dedicated to telling you when the bus is coming. And that system is still operating this, to this day, on the Emery Go Round. City Car Share is a nonprofit, and one of our founding missions is to promote the idea of car sharing. And really, that's the capacity which I'm here in tonight. So we offer educational materials to people who are starting car shares, and we'll give a presentation to just about anyone who wants to hear about car sharing. So very little about city car share, other than our experience in operating car sharing here for the last five years, almost six years. So what is car sharing? Car sharing offers members, it's a membership-based service, that offers access, 24-hour access to cars, which are distributed around the city. So rather than a central location to pick up a car, these cars are parked in neighborhood areas, small parking lots, and you access them electronically. Access is typically with some sort of a little electronic device, so you have an electronic key that will open the car that you've reserved. And all of the costs are bundled in. So rather than buying a vehicle for $20,000 and then putting gas in it and driving it, you pay by the hour. Car sharing is very common in Europe, and it's getting started in the United States. There are now about 30 cities that have it. In the Bay Area, there's car sharing now in El Srito, Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco. So we're surrounded by car sharing, but not yet anything in Emeryville. To give some sense of scale, City Car Share has 6,500 active members, sharing 200 cars at 100 locations. There are two other companies that operate car sharing in the Bay Area. Zipcar, a for-profit company with about 5,000 members, and Flexcar, another for-profit company. So car sharing offers a number of environmental benefits, and that's where City Car Share started into it. Variable pricing, if you drive less, you'll pay less. The studies have shown, and I've brought some of the studies with me today, a dramatic reduction in the need for parking. Each City Car Share, or each car share spot that's put in displaces somewhere between 10 and 20, depending which survey you'd like to believe, other parking spaces. It makes for a modest reduction in the number of miles traveled by its members, and typically the cars are better maintained and more fuel-efficient and better mileage vehicles than the average fleet. It's strongly supportive of public transit, bicycling, walking, and in fact, it really only works well in areas where those are strong. And Emeryville has a history of car sharing. If you take a look at this picture, which is on the screen, if you look carefully, what building do you see in the background there?
Woodfin.
No. I believe that's Woodfin Suites. The sign says "Car Share Parking Only," and when I last checked about a month ago, it was still up. And that's from a UC Berkeley research study, it took me some time to figure out exactly where that sign had come from, that operated car share in Emeryville for about six months. It was unfortunately not a success. City Car Share proposed to move in to Emeryville some years ago, and in fact, came-
This is on Christie, is that it?
It's on Christie in front of PPP.
Yeah, okay.
And then in the background, you'll see Woodfin Suites. City Car Share proposed to move into Emeryville, and I believe an agreement was even inked, and then that deal fell apart. Flexcar, one of the for-profit competitors, moved in and placed a pickup truck at IKEA, but quickly pulled it out. Emeryville has the density, but in many ways, it's not classic car-sharing territory. Car ownership rates are relatively high. There are many gated parking garages where there's ample parking. Transit access is, is good in many ways through the Emery Go Round, but indirect. Some of the shopping areas are big-box areas, not the kind of retail. These are indicators where car sharing has worked in the past and where Emeryville is presently different. There are walking mobility barriers, and we know these well. I-80, the railroad tracks are hard to get across. I'll show you a map of members in a moment. But all that said, there's opportunity here, and the question is, and this is up on the slide, if we're committed to doing it, how do we make it work? And the answer is to get multiple users. Car sharing experiences very high-peak loads among its traditional audience. So people who use car sharing don't drive to work. That, that wouldn't work. So these are people who get to work some other method. And that means that car sharings need peaks in the evenings and on weekends. And there's a graph up here, which shows Saturday at the peak and Monday at the, at the drop. The demand for car sharing seems to be about two to one, so it's twice as popular on the weekend as it is on a Monday. And that's not so surprising, because all of those people are getting to work some other way, rather than driving. And so, to make a program work in an area that otherwise wouldn't support it, you want to bring a lot of users in who drive at different times of day. Residents, city staff, commuters, employees, employees who might drive during the middle of the day, senior citizens, people who have different peak needs than the traditional user, to help even out that demand curve and make it work financially without a big subsidy. So success factors for car sharing, and these are drawn from City Car Share's experience in the Bay Area and drawn from these reports. They seem to be pretty much the same. Clustering vehicles, making sure there's enough vehicles, so if the one you want isn't available, you can walk to the next one. Vehicles that are visible from the sidewalk, so people walking by learn about the program. The traditional information, education, and outreach. And a partnership with car rental. Car rental and car sharing go hand-in-hand. If you want to take a car for a week, you're better off with Hertz, Davis, or Enterprise. If you want a car to go visit your friend, who happens to live in the South Bay, you're better off with car sharing. And stability, permanence, and reliability, and this is really one of the reasons that City Car Share pulled out. We really don't want to move into an area, as City Car Share, that we don't stay in. Because if you're going to get people to change their habits, to sell a car, give up a car, they really have to have the message that you're there and you'll be there for the long haul, and so I'd like to stress that for you. Look for programs that have some stability, otherwise you won't get the uptake that you're hoping for. This time around, there are potential for more partners than the last three efforts with, with car sharing in Emeryville. The Emeryville TMA, Wendy Silvani will speak in a moment, the developer community, the business community, which may be able to do fleet replacement, and the city departments. I'll quickly describe a fleet program. A fleet program with car sharing works much like a traditional fleet program, except that you can lease the cars for only part of the day. So traditionally, if you were to go out and lease some vehicles or buy some vehicles, you have to own them 24 hours a day. That only makes sense. With car sharing, you can buy the cars or lease the cars for only part of the day, say 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the reason that works is the characteristic of car sharing. The evening and weekend, weekend people in the community, the people in the community will pick up and use the cars during the evenings and weekends, and the businesses can have exclusive access to those cars during the day. So this has been pioneered at the municipal level by two cities, Berkeley, California, and Philadelphia, PA, both of which took some of their city car, city fleet cars and sold them, and essentially outsourced the management of them to a car-sharing organization, a different one in each case. And they each lease the cars from 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM for the business day, and then the same cars are available for the community to use off-hours. So it's a very good potential synergy. So in six years of operating a car share in the San Francisco Bay Area, City Car Share has learned a lot about what works. I'm going to bring up a map here, hopefully. So this is a map of California at the moment, and I'm going to zoom in on the Bay Area. Each black dot is a City Car Share member. It's their home address. And I can only, I only have the data for City Car Share. I'd be happy to show you the other car shares as well, but that's not something that's typically shared. So the San Francisco Peninsula there and the East Bay, and you can see there's really quite a blizzard of dots. I'll zoom in on San Francisco first. And if you can try to get the lay of the land quickly, you'll see the Bay Bridge and the Golden Gate Bridge and the major BART lines. And the membership tends to follow those major transit corridors.
BART.
BART and the major bus lines, such as the 38 Geary and the, the light rail in San Francisco. And the places with poor transit access, City Car Share hasn't attracted a lot of members. This map roughly parallels the density map, but not really. It really parallels the transit mode share, the people who, who take something other than driving to work. I'll move over to the East Bay.
While you're doing that, I just noticed there wasn't a whole lot along the Caltrain line.
Well, the Caltrain stations are spaced fairly far apart. Another area that City Car Share moved into, well, if you, this is the Caltrain line that I'm showing, this purple line, I hope. And the dots that are down there are all near Caltrain, even though there's not a huge number of them.
Right.
Again, those people probably have cars at home, and so the reason that they use City Car Share is for a work-based trip. If I zoomed out, you'd also see a fair number of dots in Hawaii, and quite a cluster in Los Angeles and Seattle. And these are people who visit regularly, but come from the airport via BART and don't need to have a car the whole time, and so they, they, they share instead. So zooming in on the East Bay. Again, the dots do follow the major transit corridors, and they, they get fairly sparse in two notable areas. One area where they're relatively sparse is down in the Jack London Square area, which is an area where City Car Share placed a location but had to pull it out. And there's not yet much activity in the, in the Emeryville area.
Bryce, let me ask you about this, because the Capitol Corridor has really had extensive success over the past three to five years, and one would think that they would be prime targets for a car share membership, both in, in Jack London Square and at the Emeryville Station.
You're thinking of people who commute to work via the Capitol Corridor?
Right.
Assuming that they live here and, and work in Sacramento.
Or vice versa, live in Sacramento and Davidson, commute down here.
Well, they wouldn't show up on our maps as being Emery, as being Emeryville or Jack London Square residents. We'd see them in Sacramento, and I can zoom out and show you where they were. That's where their home location is. A weakness of the data we have is that we don't always know their work address, and many people are members of car sharing so that they can do midday trips to the dentist or emergency ride home kind of thing. So they take transit in regularly, but they have a backup option with car sharing.
Well, see, that would certainly be operative in Emeryville, because we have so many daytime workers here. They may or may not be car share members, but we don't capture that information, because they come in from someplace else.
And that's one of the reasons that the participation of the TMA is tremendous, because that is, is the avenue to reach those people, many of those people who come in every day but don't live here.
Bryce, do you know if there's a correlation between car share members and the people who enroll in guaranteed ride home?
Guaranteed ride home in San Francisco is eligible. You can use car sharing. No, that study hasn't been done, to my knowledge. What's been done is transit passes and mode to work, and there, the correlation is extremely strong. And I can show that to you in, in, in all of the reports. I don't know about guaranteed ride home as a program.
But do you know what that program is?
I know what that program is.
Okay.
And, and really, see, people roll their own guaranteed ride home program using City Car Share, where they take transit to work, but they have access to a car if they need it during midday. I think it's very valuable. I'll, I'll say that City Car Share needs a better pricing program for that particular program, and I'll, and I'll try to avoid the pricing question after this.
I know from the CMA, the average mileage of the taxi rides that are utilized through, through guaranteed ride home run in the neighborhood of like 80 miles one way.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're really long-haul trips, in a way.
Yeah, and in that way, it's not a great match.
No.
But you can, they take that car overnight and presumably return it 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM the next morning.
Okay.
Okay, so what community characteristics are supportive of car sharing? One of the major characteristics has to do with sidewalk vitality. So places with on-street parking really do well. And you might ask, how is that even related? But if you're going to share a car, chances are you're going to have to walk a block or two to get it. And the question is, are those sidewalks vital and active, and are those places that you're willing to, to walk a certain distance? So safe, walkable streets with 24-hour vitality, and on-street parking is something that helps energize that. When you have on-street parking, people are coming home, finding a place to park, and then becoming part of the pedestrian environment. Strong public transit is highly correlated, walkable destinations, and then I emphasize the same point again, the lack of gated parking. So something that we see that's a negative correlation with City Car Share membership is a gated building, a building where you drive into the building as your destination, some sort of gate opens, and you never become part of the pedestrian environment. Other things that help, of course, are the traditional unbundling of parking costs. There's a cautionary note from one of the researchers on, on some of the unintended effects of unbundling. Mixed-use parking lots and district parking, where a, a single parking garage might serve multiple needs. And again, part of what that does is it gets people to park, become part of the pedestrian environment for a short period of time, and then reach their final destination. So what could the city council act on? Of course, this is a study session, you're just learning and not acting, but things that municipalities can and have done in order to support car sharing are providing access to on-street parking to qualified car shares. Car sharing pays more for parking than an individual would, and it's one of the biggest costs that all car shares face. And in San Francisco, the competition among the three car shares for parking spaces is fierce, bidding the prices way, way up. People now advertise on Craigslist, $175 a month, or $250 for car sharing. And so parking is a huge cost, where an individual who owns two or three cars can park one or two of them on the street at, at no additional charge. Car sharing has to pay for those. So access to on-street parking is one way to encourage car sharing. New developments, there could be some standards. I've attached to the handout that I'll give you a copy of San Francisco's ordinance relating to buildings with over 50 units and car sharing. Unbundling of parking, where people pay for parking separately from the units, particularly powerful if they lease parking. And-
Why does that help?
If you unbundle parking in the tradi, in one way that it's done, where you sell the unit separately from the parking spot, there's a psychological effect where people want to buy the parking space now, because they might not be able to buy it later. And so people have found that they buy more spots than they need when they get the chance to unbundle parking. If they lease parking, on the other hand, they use exactly the amount of parking they want, they need, because they don't want to pay a cost for something they're not using. So that's a danger of deeded unbundled parking. And I have some backup material on that in, in the handout. Getting information out over time, if the TMA has a giant information program to bring car sharing to Emeryville, that will fade over time. It'll be a new thing for a while, and how do you get information out over time? And one suggestion is that in developments, one of the TDM conditions be that there be a notice board, just a simple bulletin board, cork board or behind glass, where current transit schedules and maps are placed. So people just sort of run into them as they're going to check the mail. You have a lot of people who live near a bus route or a transit option but don't know that it exists. So access to information, continually refreshing that as they're going through, using the building normally. And I have a question that I'll, I'll pose, and I don't know the answer to this, it's a tricky one. If you were to have an ordinance that mandated that developers provide a certain number of car-sharing spots per thousand square feet, what would happen? Let's say that there was, there were two spots at a particular new residential tower, and two different car-share companies come in and both want that spot. How do you resolve that? Or alternatively, you have two spots that are mandated as part of a new development, and no car-sharing company wants to move in. So it's something to think about. I'm, I'd love to hear your, your thoughts on that. So that's it for my presentation, and Wendy of the TMA will mention a program that she'd like to get started.
Bryce, before you leave, what do you consider to be a critical mass of cars in a one-square-mile area for car sharing?
Never, never put just one car in a location. Always put at least two. And try to space your cars, so that if a car isn't available at the first spot, it's a comfortable walk to the second spot. This is, if you're good with Emeryville geography, you would be able to pick out the BART station, MacArthur BART on the right, which has a dot, and then five dots in Emeryville. And I feel that five locations in Emeryville, each with two cars, would cover the area adequately.
Would give you a, a base that might be viable.
That's what you'd need in order to serve the entire community with car sharing. Five locations, two cars each. If you were to start a program, I would recommend against putting one car at each of the five locations, and instead, pick a section, probably near the Amtrak station for your first cars, and then grow from that success. Don't spread things too thinly. Otherwise, what happens is someone needs a car, and they can't get it. And then you lead to disappointment.
So there could be one at the public market to walk over the bridge if the Amtrak one isn't available?
Yes, absolutely.
For example?
One on each side of the Amtrak bridge would be a great, small-scale start to a program. And then try to tell people that if they want, they can take the Emery Go Round to MacArthur BART, where Flexcar and City Car Share both have three cars. And I'll be available to answer lots of questions also after, after Wendy comes up.
Let's have Wendy talk, and then if we have any questions, we'll ask them.
While Wendy's coming up, I'll ask my question here.
Sure.
I noticed there's a pickup truck available, kind of, I guess, near Kirala or something, near the Berkeley Bowl, not far from there, and I'm not sure whether it's the company that you work for, another one of the two, but what happens if there are like specialty needs for, for hauling or whatever? And I never see that pickup truck being used. It's always parked there.
Yeah, the, the pickup truck is at UC Storage, and-
Right, right, right.
The people who put it there thought that would be a great synergy, and it hasn't worked out that well.
Got it.
One of the advantages of car sharing is that you can match your vehicle type to your trip type. And we see people who've purchased a smaller car to own and then use City Car Share when they have a specialty need. So diversity of car types is an advantage, and all three Bay Area car shares offer multiple car types ranging from fun to very practical.
Thank you, Bryce.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Wendy Silvani with the TMA. I need to just stress that we have not technically adopted this as a program yet. My board will be having it on its next agenda, and I do anticipate that we'll vote it in and get going on it, but I just need to preface the comments with this is a program that I have started. How's that? Like that? Okay. That I have sent to the board and asked for their initial feedback, and so it will be on our next agenda. And I've gotten very good feedback so far, so I'm not anticipating that it won't be happening. But basically, what I like about it is it begins to add to the family of transportation services and options that we talked about when I came before you back in December. You know, it's good, because it shares and leverages the resources that are all working towards the common goal of reducing single occupancy vehicles and lessening the demand for people driving around town unnecessarily by themselves. It benefits Emery Go Round users, it benefits other transit users, it encourages lots of new users to try transit, because they have an option, and they know that if they do need a car during the day or at other times, there is one available to them. It will benefit the residents and other people who may not really need a car but may kind of be on the edge of needing a car, or who may not need a second car, which will help tremendously as well. Most importantly, what car sharing does is it's not a standalone program, but it augments and it complements other transit options. So it, it offers people flexibility- So, it offers people flexibility. Bryce mentioned the type of car, if you need a road car to take a big trip or something, but you don't need it Monday through Friday every day. So, it gives people a lot of flexibility and options to use a car when they need it and for what they need it. I believe that Peter gave you all a copy of my proposal, so I won't take the time to go through it, because I know you've all done that. But basically, the concept, what I have in mind for the TMA is for us to take and use TMA money as seed money to start up and subsidize pods until they can become self-sufficient. So that what I envision, and I've met with Bryce, and I've also met with the other two carsharing companies to come up with this outline, I envision six to eight months of TMA seed money for each two cars, whether it's two cars in one pod or one car each in two different pods. You know, those are details that we'll get to once we-- once my board approves the program. But, once a pod is generating enough revenue to pay what it costs, the TMA will take that same money and start up another pod. So, we'll be kind of recycling, we'll be using our money to seed new pods. And if we're having to subsidize one for longer than the board is comfortable, we'll pull it and take the money and start another one somewhere else. So that I see it as, you know, enabling and facilitating kind of the eventual five to seven pods throughout town within a two-year period. That's kind of my concept.
Wendy, if your board okay's this, and it sounds like a really well-thought-out program, I understand it's your intention to market this on the Emerygo round buses, to your customers on the Emerygo round buses. Did I misperceive that? Because they're natural people to--
We'll be marketing every which way we can. We'll be marketing directly with the P-Bid members and within their companies on our website, in our schedules, on the buses. We'll be doing a lot of marketing around starting up locations and making sure that people enroll--
And within the big housing complexes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Wendy? Peter, did you have some closing remarks you wanted to make?
Yes, so, I think what we have as a recommendation from staff is that you consider that we do have a pool car here at Public-- for Public Works staff, that I use a lot, for example. That is a possible candidate for a-- as Berkeley has done, to switch that out to a pool car or a carshare vehicle. There are some advantages and disadvantages doing that. One is the cost. If no one else used that car, if we were to go ahead and not use the pool car that's sitting there, or sell it, or just put it in the courtyard, and have a pool-- a shared car out in front here, for example, it would be open to use on the evenings and weekends to the public, but no one may sign up for it. And in that case, it would cost the city about $1,600 a month to support that car. That's quite a bit more than we're paying right now for our one pool car in Public Works. It's hard to put together all the costs, but the car that we have right now is already six years old. We don't usually retire them, I think, until they're 10 years old. So, we're entering maybe the period where we might have more maintenance on our pool car that we own. You know, all those things can affect the cost of it. So, it could be worth doing for a one-year experiment. If it fails, then, you know, what Bryce was talking about is that that's not a good way to go about doing it. Maybe it's better to wait until, you know, we could see how the ones do at the Amtrak station, and then augment that, or, you know. So, there's advantages and negatives to waiting or to starting now.
And what about going after the TFCA money?
And that's also part of it, is that the TFCA did fund part of the switch out that Berkeley did with part of their fleet. I think that they replaced 10 cars of their fleet. But, the CMA doesn't like doing small grants with that TFCA money, and this would be a small grant, under probably $10,000. They wouldn't pay for the whole cost of the $1,600 a month.
But if you worked it into a multi-year grant, you could pop it up to their level.
That's possible. It's possible, right, right. So, we could apply for it, and they said we could apply for it, but they may turn us down, so we can't guarantee that--
Well, apply for it and do it multi-year, and then they give you--
Yeah, that's right. We only get about $10,000 a year in TFCA grants, so.
But, we've done that in the past with-- because our money is $10,000 or less.
That's right.
But if you do it multi-year, then you can--
Unfortunately, right now, we're negative. We've borrowed already against that, so they're not wanting to give us a lot of years in advance when we're already negative. Usually, we wait until we have five years with the funds or so, and then do something. So, I don't know if they'd agree with it.
Peter, about how much public use would be necessary for the car to break even?
Well, I think that Bryce has said something like 20 to 30 members is-- is that right?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, 20 to 30 members is usually what you try to get to sustain a car. You know, every new member that uses it would decrease our $1,600 a month cost. So, you know, depending on how well the TMA markets it, if they move ahead with their proposal, maybe people would want to use the car that's located here. We could try to convince other businesses in the surrounding area here, like maybe Palo Alto, if they have weekend catering business, maybe they would want to use it, or evening catering use, or something like that. We thought about sharing it with Pixar, but they would have the same kind of issues that we would have, which is that they would want to have it reserved for them during the daytime, and it wouldn't work probably, so.
So, about how much would it cost to be a member of Carshare? Does that depend on your use?
Well, it varies from company to company. There's usually a monthly charge, and then there's an hourly charge, and then sometimes you have a mile charge as well. So, they vary, but it's--
But it's about a third of the cost of maintaining your own vehicle, right?
Depending on the usage.
If it's affordable, that's the point--
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it gets really low usage, the shared car, then it wouldn't be as affordable probably as--
What happens if you cause an accident that was body damage to the car, personal injury? How's that covered? Especially in California law? We're not a no-fault state, so how does that work?
Sure. Carsharing as a concept bundles all the costs that would normally be fixed costs into a variable cost. So, normally, you buy a car, you pay per year for insurance, and then you pay per tankful for gas. All of that's bundled into the hourly or mileage fee of a carshare, and that's how all three Bay Area carshares work. So, all of them provide insurance at different levels. So, if there's an accident, it's covered. City Carshare policy, the policy is a $1 million policy, and the member has a $500 deductible for the accident. So, if you totaled the car with injury to someone else, you'd pay $500. FlexCar has a similar policy. ZipCar, same concept, except they have the state minimum insurance rather than the million dollars. So, generally, limited to around $500 in the case of a worst-case accident.
Can I ask a follow-up? What's the age range of people that can participate?
18 up. And the 18 to 21s are a special case, and pay an additional fee for that.
To offset the additional insurance cost?
To offset the additional insurance cost, and potentially, the additional maintenance cost. It's a question for carsharing, whether to include those people. But also, I think that as a mission-based organization, we don't want people to grow up, get their driver's license, own their own car for two or three years, and then try to convert them to carsharing. We'd rather try to bring them in the fold right away.
What kind of investigation is done as to people's driving records when they try to become a member?
All carshares check driving records and have standards. In the case of City Carshare, there have to be no DUI in the last four years, and no serious incidents in the last two years, one accident maximum. So, a clean, but not spotlessly clean, driving record.
But what about speeding tickets?
Speeding tickets are okay below a certain level. And so, all carshares perform a check and will reject members. City Carshare rejects around a little over 1% of the people who apply, based on a driving record.
And just, I just want to say, the council is, I mean, whatever we're thinking about doing here, I don't know if we have to donate the vehicle if we want to do this, but I'm not comfortable with a city being in a program that only has $1 million in insurance. Honestly, that is nothing anymore these days. I mean, if you injure somebody badly, that can't work again, a million dollars doesn't go very far. You need an umbrella policy of at least another, maybe up to $5 million. So, I don't-- and typically, those are not overly expensive, it's that first million that's expensive. So, I don't know how we would be indemnified or defended from that, but if we're a member, it seems to me we're vulnerable.
Sure. I'll ask about the umbrella coverage. My understanding from Peter is that the city is self-insured for use of that vehicle now. And so, in the case where City Carshare were the city fleet vehicle, it would provide that first million dollars coverage, which isn't currently covered. Do we have an answer on that? Is there someone who knows the answer to that question?
We'd have to check with our insurance authority on that.
Well, I mean, yeah. I can just tell you that that's problematic, very much so, particularly with teenagers driving. And not that I don't appreciate trying to draw them into the fold, but just look at what happens to parents when their kids start driving. Insurance rates double and sometimes triple. And so, there's a lot of vulnerability there. So, I have some very strong concerns about our self-insurance being on the line after--
Yeah, I don't-- I mean, if, correct me maybe if I'm wrong, but I, if we're a member of a carshare organization, the city, and we use that vehicle, it's not our vehicle. If someone else is using that vehicle outside of the times that we've agreed to use it, it wouldn't be our car, it wouldn't be our liability.
Well, who owns the vehicle?
It would be the carshare company owns the vehicle. We wouldn't own the vehicle.
All right, but if, I don't know--
Well, these are questions--
Yeah, I think the insurance is a key issue, and it's also the cost versus our current insurance versus this other kind of insurance.
And I'd also be concerned about what one does about, you know, even though you have rules they aren't supposed to, the same is true with rental cars, about people smoking in the cars, because that can discourage anybody from wanting to use it subsequently.
Yeah, yeah. We'd have to follow the rules of the carshare organization, and it's their car, so.
When it comes to picking a car, my wife always says, "No, no, don't go with Avis," because the Avis cars always smell like smoke. They don't enforce the rules very well. City Carshare has a very high fine for smoking in the vehicle, smoking is not prohibited. Cars, other than guide dogs, other than service animals, are not allowed in the cars, and that's something we watch out for a lot. The cars don't smell like cleaning chemicals, which is often what a rental car does smell like.
Let me ask you, on a given day, let's say a particular car was reserved three times in the same day.
Yes.
How does Carshare know who smoked in the car if someone did?
Sometimes, that's a detective job. And carsharing is sharing. So, if you take a car, it's your responsibility as the member to return that car on time, and if the gas is low, you fill it yourself, because there's no one who visits the car in between you and the next person. So, that's the fundamental characteristic of it. And that's what it's about. And so, the people who don't share well, and it's not a huge number, eventually aren't members of the Carshare.
Any other comments? John?
Yeah, my comment is, we heard earlier that the goal is to roll this out citywide in about two years. And so, I'm worried that we might benefit by having it citywide from the beginning and being able to generate public relations benefit by saying, "Look, we are a carshare city. We have carshare throughout the city, and you can find a carshare car throughout the city." I think that there would be, in other words, let's think about it as like a product. If their product is being launched, it's typical that there's saturation. Now, obviously, a company that's putting out some sort of product has a great deal of capital behind that, so I don't know what this would cost. But the theory is that you need to grab that market share from the beginning, and the strategy of building up is not the winning strategy. You need to create buzz, and so, you need to go with a big impact at the beginning. So, that's my comment, and whether there's some way that we can do that, and whether there's benefit to that. I worry that the strategy of going with one pod, and then with another, and then another, it doesn't get going, it doesn't--
Well, Peter, we haven't had from you an estimated cost for the Grand Slam program as opposed to the pod creating another pod, creating another pod, which it sounds like Wendy's program is going to do. So, before we consider anything like that, you have to look at what would be the dollar cost for the Grand Slam--
Exactly.
--as opposed to the pod by pod.
Right.
And if the TMG board moves forward with this program, it's going to give us certainly a pretty good vision of whether it will be working in the city or not, and we could observe that very closely. But we need some numbers, Peter, I think.
Well, it is, yeah. It is $1,600 a month is roughly per car, is what it costs if no one else were to use that car besides, you know, us, or for each car, basically. So, if you're going to subsidize five cars, it would be five times $1,600, you know, per month. And then, hopefully, you get people using them, and then that cost would go down as people start using them. So, that's roughly what your cost is. If you could do that for one year, and you could do, you know, five times $1,600 for one year, and that would be your cost to do five cars around the city for a year.
I mean--
The minimum or the maximum cost.
In a way, I'm actually not, see, I'm not saying that this is the way to go. I'm just asking from a marketing perspective. I would like to hear from someone who's gone to business school and knows marketing and says, "Yeah, you know, you don't, the cost, crunching the numbers, the cost, it's more cost-effective to go one pod and then make that one profitable, and then it starts spilling over, and then you do a second one." Or is it better to, and I agree that the cost is a big part of it, but I just, the only analogy I can think of is critical mass. You know, you need to have so much critical mass to get a nuclear reaction going, and if you don't have it, it just fizzles out. And so, I just feel like we would get a lot of impact by saying to media organizations, "This is a city that has carshare within five minutes' walk of anywhere in the city." I just think that it would be powerful. So, that's, those are my thoughts. I think it's a great, great idea, just--
Well, I think we're all very supportive of carsharing. What is, where you get into difficulty is how are we going to implement this within the resources and the funds that we have?
Right, right.
Ken?
I guess I was kind of agreeing with John. If you don't make a good upfront effort to get enough cars out there, then the participation will be limited, so.
Well, fortunately, hopefully, Wendy will be doing a pre-marketing survey with her marketing to see what kind of true interest is out there. So, within the next three to six months, hopefully Wendy will share this information with us, and we'd have a better basis to move forward with what we're doing.
Is there some way to, you know, provide some incentive for someone who may not be familiar with it? Maybe they can use a car for free for a couple of days, or some way to get people familiar with it? Because unless they're familiar with it--
Well, I looked at the various companies and how they charge, and basically, some of the companies provide a lower monthly fee, and then you pay, or no, you pay less per month, you pay more per month, and then the, yeah, you pay more per month, and then the incremental cost, whether it's by hour or by a mile, is lower. And so, it's, what is it similar to? I can't think of what it's similar to. But, in other words, if you're a low-volume user, then you pay, you'll pay, for example, more per mile. You'll sign up for a particular category, you are a, you know, bronze member or something, and you are paying 15 cents a mile. And if you pay more, then you can get a better rate on the mileage, so.
Can we, rather than getting into the details now, can we agree to benefit from Wendy's experiments and use the TMA's money to gather the information and then move forward?
But if I could just make one comment, too. I understand what you're saying, John, about the critical mass. I think this is going to be a very expensive program, and I think it works best in dense areas, and I don't think we're a dense area. There's a lot of challenges to make this working in Emeryville, we're 0 for 3 so far, and I don't know how much money I'd be willing to vote to go up front in the hope that that big first burst makes this a successful program. So, you know, I just think back to the experience of the Emerygo round itself. We started small, and added, and built, and it worked. And I'd rather start something that's well-thought-out, not overextending ourselves funding-wise, and build on it. I think we've got a better chance to make it successful. But I'm willing to listen to what the numbers are and what the recommendations are, and we'll see where we go.
I did have one final question as a policy. What about the issue of requiring new developments to provide for-- What about the issue of requiring new developments to, and provide for car-share pods, or, currently, I think, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, do we still have the policy about the electric car charging stations as a condition of approval?
It's in our standard conditions, and most major projects have that condition.
So this would be kind of an analogous, you know, to that, as an alternative form of transportation, that larger projects have to...
Well, Peter, I, I'm concerned about that because Bryce was saying the best way for new developments to, the best way for CarShare to work is when it's visible from the sidewalk, and yet all we seem to be building are these gated communities with, with parking garages that you have to go into, so...
Well, we could look at the standards from San Francisco that talk about if it's going to be in a, you know, they, they have requirements about it being available to the public, even if it's within, you know, so you have to figure out how it's going to work. Maybe it would be on the street next to the community in a designated spot that the city would provide, but maybe they would help fund, the, the new development could help fund, for example, part of the cost, for example, for a year, or something like that.
I would ask the support of the council that we take this question to the Planning Commission, and have the, you know, this is what they do. Take this question on the CarShare requirement to the Planning Commission and ask them to give their advice back to us. How's that sit with everybody? Do you have anything else, Bryce?
Vic, you were mentioning the idea of, well, we're not dense enough, and, and I, I kind of agree, but it gets back to the, what I think is, is a fundamental question, that's chicken-and-egg problem. And, and so I continually hear the argument, "Well, we're not ready to do unbundled parking, we're not ready to do this because we don't have enough public transit, we don't have enough car share, we don't have enough of this." And, and I say, "Well, that's because, you know, we need to do that." And, and I, and I don't know who better to do it than for government to do that, because the private entities have a free-rider problem, essentially. So, but I do hear you with, with the cost, and I, like I said, I, I'm very cognizant of the cost. But, but I want us to, to try and crack this nub of the chicken-and-egg problem. And, and the way that I would do that is, is to, is to jumpstart seed money.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Charlie?
On your direction to refer this to the Planning Commission for their advice, you have on your regular agenda tonight a contract for a consultant to do a comprehensive study of parking policies. And I think this is directly related to that. Part of that study will result in zoning, suggested zoning ordinance amendments. So rather than refer this separately to the Planning Commission, I would suggest that this be folded in as part of that effort.
Very good. As long as we don't lose it in all the paperwork.
We won't.
Very good. Bryce, thank you so much.
And I'd like to respond, Dick, on the density question. Emeryville, I think, it's, it's a little hard to get good density numbers. I maybe need some help. But I believe that, that Emeryville is around four to five times more dense than a number of locations where City CarShare alone is able to be a success. On the map here is the BART line, and there's North Berkeley Station is the dot in the lower half, and in the upper-left half is El Srito Plaza Station, a location that supports two car shares. It's a very profitable location. It makes, it makes money. Not all of City CarShare locations make money. We're a nonprofit after all. That one makes money at two cars with, I'd say, a fifth the density overall of Emeryville.
Good, okay, thanks.
So it's not density, it's walkability.
Thank you, Bryce.
And thank you.
This special session is closed. We'll open up both the...